I call the 3:00 PM session of April 22, 2025, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of the visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in this meeting, and it will be Agenda item number 18 tonight. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and taking part in your county government. Our first Agenda item of consideration prior to naming it, the board has before it a proclamation that was added a little later, maybe a day or so later, to add to the board packet, but it will be a part of the consent agenda, and it's referencing the volunteer fire and rescue agencies, this proclamation, as we've had in the past. So with that, being added to the items of consent, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number six, monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report for the end of March 31, 2025. Personal property collection, we collected eighty-six point five seven percent of the twenty-four personal property taxes. Real estate, as of March 31st, we collected ninety-three point two oh percent of the real estate taxes. During the month, we collected two-hundred-one thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars. Since January 1 of 2025, TACS has collected three-hundred-ten thousand dollars for us. Our debt set off, we collected two-hundred-four thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars so far this year. Our DME stops so far in the month of April, we've had a hundred and seventy-six stops collected.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Grinstaff, at this time? Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, does anyone have a report from EDC for us?
I don't remember anything.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Agenda item number eight, a consideration of a resolution in support of a community development block grant application. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is requesting board's approval of a resolution supporting an application from a community development block grant through the Virginia Department of Emergency Development to address community improvements in the Old Bassett Heights Road area of the county. If it's okay, I'll ask Grant's Administrator Cindy Adams to come up and tell us a little more about that project.
Sure. Hi. So, in July 2023, the county applied for and was awarded a fifty thousand dollar planning grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia in the form of a community development block grant. We used that planning grant money to hire Summit Designs to do a housing study for Henry County. This study told the varying degrees of housing all over Henry County. So what we did was we got that assessment, we broke it down to each area of the county, and the reason that the Old Bassett Heights Road was chosen was because it had one of the higher rates of not only dilapidated housing, but it had owners that lived in the houses and owners that rented houses versus then they have no vacancies. I think there's one house on the street that's actually going to be, it's going to be demolished. Other than that, there's people in those houses and they've been deemed unsafe by the assessment. So, actually, this project got larger than what we thought. There's ten owner rehabs, which means the owners live there, they need their houses rehabbed, they've already met income requirements. There are three owner investor properties there. The tenants there have also met the income requirements. We have one point two million dollars to spend, and so we're going to have to break this up into actually getting, hoping to get two grants. The window hasn't opened yet, but there will be a Phase One and a Phase Two to be able to accommodate all the houses that are in need of repair or replacement.
Okay. Cindy, I know that you won't have had one public hearing on this.
Yes.
Do you have a date for the public record as to when the second public hearing will be?
Yes, that will be April 28th, which is this coming up Monday, and it will be at five thirty here in this room.
In this room?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in our district, and I know we've had some discussion about it. Just want to say it's very exciting, so looking forward to all of that. I know that there has been a lot of discussion in our county about trash, of course, and some of the blights for Reed Creek. This is a very, very exciting project, so thank you for the research and the grant applications and for getting this done. I think that, and please correct me, that you were given, throughout the county, there were areas that were cited for the need for some kind of rehabilitation, but this specific place in Henry County, which is in Reed Creek, was deemed the, one of the worst.
Yes, and that's-
Collectively, one of the worst.
And it's like I explained to the citizens that came to the first meeting, you know, don't think, you know, don't get stereotyped into, I live on the worst street in the county. It's not like that. It's just this particular street, most of the owners still live there. There are a lot of elderly people on that street, and they've lived there their whole life. Unfortunately, being able to repair their homes has not been something they've been able to afford, so we are glad to be able to hopefully get in there and help them with that.
And one requirement was the individuals have to be the homeowner. They had to own the home.
No. Actually, they can be, it can be an owner investor house, which means it can be a renter in there, but the renter has to meet the income qualifications as well, you know, as the owners for the other homes.
Do we have any other questions while we have Cindy here? Okay. Mr. Wagner, anything to add, or Mr. Carr, either one?
We recommend your approval of the resolution.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Caldwell, this is in your district. If you care to put forth a motion?
Yes. Make a motion to approve the resolution supporting a community development block grant application to address improvements in the Old Bassett Heights Road area of Henry County as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number nine, consideration of amendments to the Martinville Henry County 911 Joint Dispatch Center bylaws. Mr. Wagner.
Chair of Dillig, Director of the Martinville Henry County 911 Joint Dispatch Center is requesting the board's approval of amendments to the 911 set of bylaws. According to the bylaws in the original agreement between the city and the county, all amendments must be approved by the board supervisors and the Martinville City Council. Director Dillig has stated that the amendments reflect terminology changes and generic appropriate titles. The 911 board of directors has reviewed and approved the proposed amendments of April 10th, and City Council is also expected to take up this matter today at their meeting. And we have Deputy Director Nicholas Hughes with us for the 911 set of amendments.
Okay. I think that the background that's been provided to the board, both in the packet that we've received electronically, and thank you, Mr. Wagner, for that, what is the desire of the board as far as the proposed amending the Martinville Henry County 911 Joint Dispatch Center bylaws?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amended Martinville Henry County 911 Joint Dispatch Center bylaws as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 10, consideration of an intergovernmental agreement for public safety. Mr. Wagner.
This is a request we bring to you every two years. Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is requesting your approval of our intergovernmental agreement with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. The proposed agreement is presented pursuant to Code Virginia 44-146.24, which authorizes the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to coordinate interstate and intrastate mutual aid within the Commonwealth. If approved, the agreement will provide the expediting mechanism for VDM to utilize local resources to support needs for Henry County during emergency, and the proposed agreement has a two-year term commencing upon final execution. And in very simple language terms, this is a mutual aid agreement with every other county in Virginia that's involved.
Okay.
Chair, you're just entertaining us here, should you have any-
Yes, I mean, thank you for providing this background material, Mr. Tatum. There's significant background material on this, and I would have one question. Do we, as far as, what is the timeliness of if there were to be reimbursements to any locality of using a locality's equipment, manpower, et cetera? Is that, does that, is that a slow process, or are we at the mercy of whoever's handling the paperwork?
It's a lot of factors to play into that, and certainly welcome Director Tatum to speak to if he wants. We have a locality, we have our individual mutual aid agreements with all our surrounding neighbors, which is pretty much understood that we'll provide that service free until we're told differently, so it's typically not a reimbursement matter in those situations. And most of the time, the reimbursement is discussed in advance if you are expecting reimbursement when you report to other areas. Beyond that, a lot of times, it depends on whether it's a state declaration or a federal declaration, and they can vary from weeks to months to years. Fortunately, we've not had to use it a lot, but we have used it.
Well, I only use that word because it was part of the documents as far as talking about that. I didn't know if we'd had any experience with that, and I know sometimes that moves slower than we would desire.
And I do remember, we, we've had resources come here, and I'm not aware of any that we got billed for directly. It was negotiated ahead of time that it was provided for free. We did send resources, we've passed them all over the Commonwealth, and we've never billed for our services here in the Commonwealth that I work out. We did, can remember, here at Pinkerton, we sent resources to New Orleans, the Gulf Coast, that area, and we did get reimbursed for those expenses, and the best I remember is about six months.
Okay. Right. Thank you. With that, what is the action the board would like to take in regard to approving the intergovernmental agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the participation in the intergovernmental agreement with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 11 will take up financial matters, beginning with 11A, an additional appropriation referencing grant funds for the Circuit Court Clerk. Mr. Wagner.
Circuit Court Clerk Jennifer Ashworth is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars received from the Circuit Court Records Preservation Grant Program. Ms. Ashworth has stated the funds will be used for the preservation of marriage bonds and order books dating back to the 1700s. So my question for you all is, do you know what a marriage bond is? It's exactly what it says. It's when a, the groom would have to put up a bond at the courthouse to guarantee that he would marry a lady, a particular lady, in the near future, and he would have to bring someone to post his bond, either a friend that would say he was worthy of their marriage, or he was good for his word until they got married. So, there was records of that in the courthouse.
That sounds like a matter of the direct-
It's, I guess you could say it's a modern-day prenup.
Then, I think that as part of our planning session, Ms. Ashworth explains some vital things that are subject to not having if we don't attend to it, and we do appreciate her taking charge of the preservation of this. What is the desire of the board with this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars received from the Circuit Court Records Preservation Grant Program. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 11B, approval of purchase referencing the fire truck for Collinsville Volunteer Fire Department. This is from Public Safety Department. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to authorize the purchase of a fire engine from municipal emergency services located in Sandy Hook, Connecticut, which will be used by the Collinsville Volunteer Fire Department. Following a thorough request for proposal process conducted by Public Safety Staff along with Collinsville Fire Department members, MES was selected as the preferred vendor. The process and the vendor has been approved by the county's purchasing department. Director Tatum is also requesting the board to authorize the disbursement of Virginia Fire Programs' funds in the amount of four-hundred-eighty-three thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, along with the additional two-hundred-thousand dollars of local funds committed to this project and payable to Collinsville Fire Department upon delivery of the fire engine. The total cost of the fire engine is approximately seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And Director Tatum is here, if you have questions, as well as Mr. Emerson, Collinsville Fire Department.
As discussed in our March meeting, we've got significant background on this purchase. Mr. Bryant, this is in your district, but also skirts the district of the Reed Creek District, so I'll hand it to you first. What action would you like to take?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of the purchase of the fire engine by the Collinsville Volunteer Fire Department from MES of Sandy Hook, Connecticut, and upon delivery, disperse in six-hundred-eighty-three thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars to Collinsville Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 11C, an additional appropriation referencing categorical transfers for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is requesting an additional appropriation of one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the school's textbooks fund for the fiscal year 2025, from the 2025 textbook fund reserve balance. The additional appropriation will be used to purchase mathematics and English textbooks, and these are, the textbook fund is a separate fund, separate of other school funded, it can only be used for this purpose.
With that, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand to the school textbook fund for the purchase of mathematics and English textbooks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 11D, an additional appropriation referencing unexpended school funds for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
The board has requested an additional appropriation of nine-hundred-and-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from unexpended fiscal year 2024 local school funds, commonly called carryover funds, to fully fund the heating and cooling system upgrades at Fielddale Collinsville Middle School. According to Superintendent Dr. Amy Blick Lewis, these funds are necessary to complete the project in its entirety. The total available local carryover is one million four hundred five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Under the existing memorandum of understanding, the board is expected to appropriate only half of that, seven-hundred-and-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, to the school board. However, it is my recommendation that the board approve the full request of nine-hundred-and-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to ensure the project's completion, and we further recommend that the remaining balance of four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars be appropriated to the county's capital discretionary fund.
Okay. With that, what is the desire of the board as far as the approval of this appropriation?
Normally, we divide that, don't we?
Yeah, there is a current memorandum of understanding that we will split the local carryover funds.
Correct.
Wasn't there also a memorandum from the governor that this particular year, all of that money could have went to the school system? Is that-
I make your reference in a budget amendment that was in, that was entered into the particular this budget year. That allowed state funds to be carried over. There was no state funds identified. These are all local funds.
Okay, any other questions? What action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriation of nine-hundred-and-nine, nine-hundred-and-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from the school's fiscal year 2024 budget, unexpended funds, and that's going to go to the heating and cooling system project at Fielddale Collinsville Middle School, and to appropriate the remaining balance of four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to the county's capital fund. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions?
No, I think, though, that it needs to be understood that we do what we can when we can, and sometimes we can't, but I think in this situation, it's going for a capital improvement, so it's definitely a needed project.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 11E, an award of contract referencing health records system for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to order a contract of forty-eight thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars to Correct Tech Incorporated located in Paducah, Kentucky, for their Spark electronic health record system. Sheriff Davis explains that on July 1, 2025, the adult detention center will no longer contract out their medical services, thus resulting in cost savings and better oversight of the overall medical operations. The health record system is needed to track inmate medical records and document medical services provided. Our purchasing department has authorized Correct Tech Incorporated as a sole source provider for this purchase, and funded for this purchase is available in the current ADC budget.
With the awarding of this contract, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract of forty-eight thousand four nineteen to Correct Tech of Paducah, Kentucky, for the purchase of Spark electronic health record system.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 11F, an award of contract referencing EMS and fire services billing for the Public Safety Department. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matthew Tatum is asking the board to award a contract to EMS Management and Consultants Incorporated located in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, to provide EMS and fire services billing. Following a competitive request for proposals, EMS MC was selected by staff and endorsed by the Emergency Services Advisory Council to enhance the current EMS billing practices and expand billing services to include volunteer fire departments. Compensation payable to EMS MC under this contract is based on a percentage of collections for the county has historically resulted in an annual cost of approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. And Mr. Tatum is here, should you have questions?
Okay, with the awarding of this contract, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract to the EMS Management and Consultants Incorporated of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for public safety and volunteer EMS and fire billing services as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda item 12, comments from the board, and I'll start with Dr. Caldwell.
The only thing I have is the community meeting, and when I was campaigning, and also last year, I was able to attend one of Ms. Buchanan's community meetings, and that was very informative and helpful. Then I went to one of Mr. Pruitt's, and then I had one, we've had a couple, I had one at Dyer Store a few months ago, and that was so successful. Now we're going to move a community meeting to Oak Level. The Oak Level Ruetton Building is where it will be, and we're just calling it the Oak Level Community Meeting, and it is on Tuesday, May the 20th, from 7:00 to 8:15, and Sheriff Davis will be there, Public Safety Director Matt Tatum will be there, and other managers will be there, and I'll be there also as a facilitator. Either Mr. Wagner or Mr. Powell will be there, so it's an opportunity for the community. Everybody's invited, but this will be the Oak Level area for brief presentations and then Q and A with our county administration. Thank you.
Great.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dillig.
Yes, sir, just want to mention, you know, I know Parks and Rec is taking over the Smith River Sports Complex, which is a great thing, but I've been out there several nights walking, and it has become somewhat of a hangout, and I think we need to, you know, get out in front of that, and some of the kids are doing productive things, throwing the football, kicking soccer balls, but then there's a contingency of kids who are just walking and talking and popping up out of the woods and doing different stuff, and it looks like parents are dropping them off, so I think we need to, you know, get with, even if it's just having somebody ride through on one of the golf carts or whatever you call those things, you know, just to check to see, make sure kids know what they should do, but definitely want to get out in front of that, you know, between the language and, you know, some of those odors that you sometimes now smell out in public. We want to stay out in front of that.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yes, sir.
I think that we want that to always be a shining light in the community and not a place that people dread to go to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
I do, and I know Pam is having one. I'm having a Horse Pasture District community meeting on Tuesday, May the 6th, from 6:00 until 7:30 PM at the Horse Pasture Ruetton Building. This will be the 30th year of me having these community meetings, and Lisa Hughes with VDOT will be there, as well as Sheriff Wayne Davis and Mr. JR Powell, along with myself. And what we try to do is always is bring what's going on in the Horse Pasture District as well as what's going on in Henry County to the people, and we'll take questions, we'll try to provide information, and try to solve a few problems.
Great. All right, thank you. Mr. Bryant.
Well, you know, they talk about community meetings, I was just telling Deborah, I was going to try to set one up in May also, for my community meeting, and I will get with the appropriate personnel to try to set up a date sometime in May, if we can clear a schedule for me. But, you know, I think that, I remember Mr. Scott Grinstaff saying that he would love to be invited to some of these so he could go over, you know, the tax changes and stuff that's coming up, billing cycles that's coming up, so it might be that you might think about actually inviting him to come up?
They were at my Dyer Store meeting, which was standing room only at that one, it was amazing, and then they also will be attending the one on the 20th. They are invited there. Commissioner and Treasurer.
Mine, I have it in writing, and they can pick up that information while they're at my meeting.
Good. All right. I don't have anything. Mr. Wagner.
Just a few calendar reminders to make sure you got them on your radar. Assuming we have a public hearing tonight on the budget and the board still desires to move forward with approving that, we have scheduled that for approval on Tuesday, April 29th, at 3:00 PM here. Just as a reminder, it must be approved by 3:00 PM. Yes, a week from today, and, you know, of course, the budget has to be, the school budget has to be approved by May 15th, so this is the date we set to approve it. Reminder, the Chamber of Commerce Post-L legislative Breakfast is next Tuesday, also, April 29th, at 8:00 AM. The post-legislative breakfast next Tuesday, April 29th, at 8:00 AM, at the New College Institute, if you want to attend that. And then Fire and Rescue Volunteer Appreciation Day is scheduled for Friday, May 16th, Friday, May 16th, at 6:00 PM here at Jack Dalton Park, so hopefully you can come out and help us recognize the work of our volunteer fire and EMS providers. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
All right. With that, that takes us to Agenda item 13. If someone will cite the reasons to go into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the board convenes in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.237-11A1 for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Community Policy and Management Team, the Piedmont Regional Community Services Board, and the Southside Community Action Board. 2.237-11A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.237- 2.237-11A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, and 2.237-11A5 for discussion as yet unannounced industries.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor is six zero, Jennifer, and I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Came out of closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan and second by Mr. Pruitt. Mr. Powell, will you poll the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, the best of your knowledge on this public business matters lawfully exempted, no meeting requirements of the Code of Virginia Section 2.37-11. Were heard, discussed, or considered in this closing meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
It's my fault.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, do you know of any items that we need to consider coming out of closed meeting?
I do not.
Board members, do you know of any that we need to consider prior to a recess?
You can do one for the Parks and Recreation Board, Mr. Gilbert.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, we can do this.
And it was on which one? Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, it was on the Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec, yeah. All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. James Gilbert to the Parks and Recreation Board for a three-year term that expires June the 30th, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. With that, are there any items that we need to consider prior to declaring a recess? Seeing no indication, we will recess and start promptly at 6 o'clock. We'll call the 6:00 PM session of the April 22nd, 2025, Meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from a recess from afternoon session. Like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in this meeting as agenda item number 18. Again, welcome, thank you for coming out tonight and being a part of your county government. Our first item of business is agenda item 14, we'll have general highway matters. We have Lisa Hughes and Dave Kaz from VDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Just a few things I wanted to mention on the Spring Transportation Meeting will be held May the 14th at 4:00, and that's at the Holiday Inn at Valley View. And, you know, you all, only three smart scale projects were recommended for funding in the Salem District, and you all have one that was recommended, so that's what I'm saying, it's been very important that you show your support if you're interested in seeing that project move forward. And that's the roundabout at 609 and 683. So just wanted to mention that. Any project updates, our 609 Daniels Creek pedestrian improvement should finish up around the first part of May, so that's winding down. And we've got the safety project there at the Dodge Store or Bojangles intersection. Been working on that. So we've got lane closures there, chloroacidal surface treatment, we've been paving, got all kinds of things going on. We do intend to start knowing probably the first week of May. And that's all I have.
Okay, as part of this agenda item, the board has as part of its working papers, the six-year secondary road plan as submitted to us by VDOT. And again, there are projects on that list, some of which has some funding, some of which has some partial funding. But again, this is a recommended list from VDOT as to what can take place at this time. Are there any questions on that while we have Lisa before we take any action on it?
I have a question. Lisa, you talked about the resurfacing. Spencer Preston Road and Spencer Penn Road, are both of those included?
Next year, that's scheduled for next year.
Okay, next year. What about the potholes on Spencer Preston Road?
Yes, we're still patching.
Still patching?
Yes, so we'll take care of that.
Good. But those two are on there for resurfacing?
Yes, in 2026.
Okay, all right, thank you.
With the item, as far as the six-year secondary road plan, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed six-year secondary road plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Are there any other items the board members that you have for Ms. Hughes?
I've got a couple things.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pruitt?
Cox Road, if you can check on that again for those potholes, they're still calling, they're saying the road's getting to where it's undrivable when you're going to speed limit because of the potholes. And they're down in that very bottom dip closest to the creek. And also, thank you for getting those no parking signs up in the town around the post office and the rescue squad in that area. That's been great. They got them up last week, and it's worked and helped tremendously.
Great, thank you.
Other items?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Speaking of signs, I want to ask you about the trucks on Philpot Drive. We've been getting calls about that. Can you say anything about having, like, no trucks allowed, or?
There's a process, and it's fairly complicated to restrict, because I guess, you know, VDOT's stance is we don't want to restrict any kind of road to specific users. So there's a very specific set of guidelines that we have to follow prior to considering that.
Okay.
And one, I guess the most important one is there a suitable alternate route available. And, you know, we can do some preliminary review, maybe get a truck count to see how many are actually using that.
Okay.
And start from there, and we can go forward if you're interested in pursuing that process.
Okay.
And we believe it's valuable.
The truck count, that makes sense. And the other one is, we've had in the community all the discussion about the litter, not just since I've been on the board, but it has been, and it's been talked about for a number of years. As the ongoing litter, potential litter projects that we have, I was wondering about do not litter signs. And it's, I just wondered if that's something that you can provide, or if a certain district specifically asks for them?
Well, the way that we handle that, you know, we've got do not litter against the law.
Yes.
So it's putting up those signs is kind of restating a law, which we typically don't do. And, you know, we have them at all the entry points into the county, into the state, the North Carolina line. And, you know, myself and my counterparts throughout the district, we handle it the same way, and we typically don't install those signs, additional signage.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, I missed what you said about, or did you mention the intersection with the Halifax and Daniels Creek?
Oh, I did not. I looked at it today. I think we can put up some signage, but that's the only thing I can see right off that would help there.
Other items, board members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 15, we will conduct a public hearing on relocation of the Fieldale Number 201 voting precinct. Board members, you have in front of you a slight variation. You have a hard copy that varies just slightly from the electronic copy that's on your computer. Mr. Wagner, will you give us a little background of this, please?
There's been a electoral board commission to move the Fieldale, which is the Number 201, voting precinct from its current location at the Victory Baptist Church on Billings School Road to the Fieldale Apartments Auditorium on Marshall Way in Fieldale. The public hearing is required before moving forth with change to the ordinance, and the public hearing has been properly advertised and scheduled for this meeting. Just a note that I'm sure the branch foreman will mention to you as well, this will not impact the June election, the June primary elections that will be for November of the elections. And General Director Donald Stott's son and the chairman of the electoral board, Joe Candidate, is here. Any other questions?
Okay, the board has this background material on this, and Ms. Buchanan, this is in your district, is there a motion you'd like to offer, or any additional questions or comments?
Oh, no. Mrs. Vaughn had called me ahead of time and asked me about the situation, and so I don't have a problem with it. I understand the reason behind it. But I make a motion to approve the change in the county ordinance that would reflect precinct number 201 in Fieldale.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
You're right. Let me conduct a public hearing, and I bypassed that, and I apologize. Public hearing will take comments at this time, beginning at 6:08. Is there anyone desiring to address the board during this public hearing? Anyone on this relocation of the Fieldale Voting Precinct, Number 201? Seeing and hearing no indication that anyone desires to speak, I will close the public hearing at 6:08. Ms. Buchanan, I apologize, we'll come back to you again. Thank you.
That's all right. I make a motion to approve the change in the county ordinance for Fieldale Precinct 201 to the Fieldale Apartments Auditorium there on Marshall Way in Fieldale.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item 16, we'll conduct a public hearing on fiscal year 2025, 2026, proposed school board budget. Mr. Wagner?
The proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget was presented to you all April 3rd, 2025, and the board held a work session on the budget on April 8th, 2025. The proposed budget recommends $119,724,257 for our school system, which includes $23,398,263 in local funds. For sure, to Section 15.2-2506 of the Code of Virginia, the board must hold a public hearing to receive citizen comment regarding the contemplated fiscal year Henry County school budget. The public hearing has been properly advertised and scheduled for this meeting.
I promised y'all I would do better, so we're going to open this public hearing at 6:10. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this school board budget that is proposed for 2025, 2026? I see one hand. Are there others? I'm going to read a brief policy statement, it won't take just a moment. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name and the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, the staff, and its members. And please try to keep your presentation three to five minutes. And I saw a hand back here. Yes, ma'am?
Just me?
Yep, just you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Raven, and I am here to ask you to reconsider Carlisle School's request for funding for a resource officer. But first, I would like to speak to you as a fellow volunteer. I've served on the Carlisle Board for the last three years, and I understand what the sacrifices of time and the donation of your talents to Henry County and our citizens in making Henry County one of the best places to live in the Commonwealth. So thank you. Serving on the Carlisle Board and helping to balance and address our budget issues, I also know that we only see the decisions, not all of the choices that you all have in front of you to make regarding funding, and none of them are easy, as I well know. Secondly, I'd like to talk to you as a mother. I have three school-aged children at Carlisle. I have a ninth grader and twins that are in the third grade. And a week ago today, I was on a field trip with my third graders when, at lunchtime, all of the teachers and, oh goodness, I'm already nervous enough, all of our phones started to buzz with an alert from Carlisle School. And as any parent of a school-aged child, when you get those notifications, there is that brief moment that you wonder if this is the moment that your life is changed forever. Thankfully, it was not. It was a notice to let us know that we had successfully completed another lockdown drill, which still is terrifying for my younger, my freshman loves them because it gets them out of class and kind of breaks up the day. But we were also told what a great job we have done, and I would like to thank you all. We've had a resource officer on our campus for three years now. The last two years, we've had Officer Shane McPee with us. He's able to attend trainings with the other school resource officers, and Henry County also lets us have a vehicle on premises that gives us a visual cue and hopefully a deterrent if anyone wanted to come to campus with causing nefarious trouble. So I do want to thank you for that support that you have offered us. We have grown regarding our safety initiatives tremendously with the feedback that we've received in coaching, and I do feel like our campuses are much safer campus due to their involvement at school, but that is something that we've been funding for three years. Now, lastly, I would like to talk with you about Carlisle School as a value add to Henry County. We are one of three independent schools or schools of choice for parents that may not want their children in a public school environment. We are the only one of those three that has had continuous accreditation from CONEA, which is an internationally recognized accreditation group, and we also are a member of the Southern Association of Independent Schools. I just got an update from Susan Aaron, who is instrumental in getting our seniors off to college. And for those of you that may not know, our main focus is a college preparatory school. So far to date, our senior class, which is 21 students, we've received over $6 million in scholarships. We have two young ladies that were competing for a full ride at UVA, the Valentus Scholarship. It's the first time UVA's ever had that happen. Both of them got that award. We have a couple of full rides at Virginia Tech, Roanoke College multiple large scholarships. We have one at Hollins that has a full ride. Eighty-five percent of our students have gotten into their first school of choice and 15% into their second. But it's not all about books, as you guys know. I think you all hosted our girls varsity basketball team that made it all the way to state and lost just by three points at the end. So all of that to say, we are hyper-focused on our mission, and we are delivering a lot for our families and students on a fairly tight budget. A decade ago, Carlisle had multiple campuses, 600 students, lots of big sports programs, and obviously the last decade plus has been a particularly challenging time for this region of Virginia, and Carlisle is no exception to those pressures. We're now down to about 300 students enrolled and about 50 faculty, so we have between 350 and 400 people on campus any day of the week. In order to balance our budget, we've had to also make some very difficult decisions, closing down our Danville Campus, our Chatham Campus, we've sold off property, we've had to have drastic reductions in staff, that's impacted our lunchroom program. We now have parents paying for lunch to be brought in, we don't have as many sports because we don't have the faculty to be able to support those sports. However, we are now debt-free and have been for the last three years. So again, we've been very aggressive about being good stewards of the funds that we have. So let me talk a little bit about Carlisle's tuition. In our lower school, we go from $6,000 up to nearly $14,000. In our lower school, we go from $6,000 up to nearly $14,000 for our upper school students, which is a lot. However, reading through the school budget, I think Henry County is spending over $16,000 per student for support. So I feel like we are offering and delivering a very good product for less money. Again, just emphasizing that we are doing a lot with the money that we have. And that's due to committed faculty, committed family as well. Of those 300 students, about 50% of them are receiving some form of financial aid. Most of the time, this looks upwards of 50%. So we start every year with a budget deficit. And again, our tuition does not cover the cost of educating these children and operating our plant. So we find ourselves constantly juggling. Again, this is not unfamiliar to anyone, juggling the budget, trying to keep up with ever-increasing expenses. So, all of this to say, we have a great school. I think we are an asset to Henry County. And we appreciate the support that you are giving us. We would just like to see if you would reconsider giving us a little bit more. Also, I would like to invite you to our campus. I know Ms. Cobbler's been there. She read her kitten's book to my first graders at the time. And you may not, I know you don't know this, but after you read that book, we had to go visit the SBCA District Pets and Kittens. And now I have three cats to add to my menagerie of activity in my house. So I would invite you to come and visit with us and see what we are doing on campus. And talk with Officer McPee about what his day-to-day is like on our campus. Feel free to reach out to Lyle, our head of school, or me, and experience firsthand what makes Carlisle such a special place and asset to this community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak on the proposed school board budget? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:20 on this. That takes us to Agenda Item 17, a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed total county budget. I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:20. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on the total county budget? Anyone at all? With that, I will close the public hearing at 6:20, seeing no hands or hearing no indication as such. Agenda Item 18, Matters Presented by the Public. Is there anyone desiring to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing no indication of that, that takes us to Agenda Item 19. But prior to that, Mr. Wagner, for the public's benefit, will you please restate what our next step is in the budget process?
So unless you have additional changes or recommendations, we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, April 29th at 3:00 PM. With the, as of now, the only agenda item is for your consideration of approval of the school budget and the total county budget.
Okay. Board members, do you have anything prior to me accepting a motion for adjournment?
I'll just mention again, I mentioned it at the earlier meeting, that we're having an Oak Level Community Meeting on Tuesday, May 20th, from 7:00 to 8:15 PM. All public are welcome, but that's specific to the Oak Level part of the district. Thank you.
One quick thing. I think May the 12th is on a Monday? Is that not right?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you check y'all's dates, and I'll take a VDOT in the search department to see if we can set a date up for my meeting?
Yeah, let me check that.
Any other items, board members? If not, I will accept the motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor? It's 6-0, Jennifer. Everyone, have a good evening.